Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School District's meeting of the Board of Education. I will call this meeting to order. As of note, tonight's board meeting will only stream the presentations and any public comments received. Us as board members, we will then go to our group workshop stations to discuss the information in further depth. But the boardroom is open, so for those of you who may be joining us online, you may join us after the fact in the boardroom. I will move on to item one B, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
I will second.
Thank you. Quentin, your preferential vote.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Ollie.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Motion passes six zero. Just for those of us who may be online, want to make sure item one C, public comment instructions are clear. The Board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the Board's jurisdiction. The Board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the Board must complete a request to speak form or via the Google form, and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the Board President, speaker cards may accepted after the start of the agenda item. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the Board decides otherwise. There are up to thirty minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With Board consensus, the President may increase or decrease the time allowed. To comply with the Brown Act, the Board may listen to comments from the speakers under public comment, but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. Given that, I will move on to item two, discussion items, parting.
We're excited to be here tonight. We have two presentations. We are going to first go to our demographers presentation, demographics report, and then we're going to do the facility one. What I wanted to ask is, as we listen to the first presentation, if you have any questions that are directly to the person who is presenting, we can ask them. I'm going to ask that we just ask questions and not conversation, because that part of it really, we're actually doing a workshop. But any questions you have, and then we're going to go to the facilities one, ask any questions you have about the presentation, the materials on the presentation, and then we will go to the tables to a workshop where we can get more in-depth into, you know, any comments or any ideas you have. That's it. Thank you. We're excited. So Ms. Chan?
Thank you. Good evening. So, yes, we do our first presentation tonight is the demographic analysis and enrollment projection study. So this was prepared by Rob Murray, who is our presenter tonight, and he is from King Consulting. So as you can see this report, if you had a chance to review it, a lot of information, useful, very useful information. Very impressed by how they prepared this report and, you know, working with him, and another capacity too with our facilities, which has really helped us in really just kind of gathering this information that we know that we really need, especially given that we're looking at also our facility needs, right? Long-term, short-term, and long-term. So I am going to ask Rob to start the presentation. There is a few slides here that will highlight some of the things from the report, but feel free, if you have any questions that are not included in the presentation, feel free to ask. Rob?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chan and Superintendent Board. It is great to be here tonight. I appreciate your flexibility in welcoming me to this meeting virtually, but I'd like to go ahead and make sure that we cover the material of the demographic analysis. So I'm just going to jump right in. Of course, if you have questions along the way, just please feel free to let me know, and we'll make sure that everything is clear. And then we get to the end, there'll be time for just additional questions if you have them. So with that, let's go ahead and go to our next slide, which will just be a high-level summary of what we took away from performing your demographic analysis and enrollment projections. And you are going to hear me say the word stable or stability or steady a lot tonight. So just get ready for that. And especially, I mean, just given that you're in California and particularly given that you are in the Bay Area, this is, that's actually what is the outlier, is how just frankly kind of boring and steady and predictable your numbers have been. But looking back over the previous decade, your enrollment in the current year is only 1.4% lower than it was in 2013. You've stayed within a range of 323 total students in that time. And looking at all of the demographic trends that we would factor to look ahead, you are going to continue to have a very stable school-age population. And then I'll be going over all these four factors with you of the, I mean, there's all kinds of things that can influence your enrollments. I'll be talking about a few more than just these, but really the big ones, incoming cohort size. If you, you know, if your kindergartners that you have coming in are significantly larger or smaller in number than the cohorts you have, either moving out of elementary school or graduating out of your district, that's the big engine that drives enrollment change in districts. And what a lot of districts are seeing recently are smaller and smaller cohorts coming in. And as the more populous older cohorts graduate out, it's very hard to keep enrollment from going down. You do not have that particular issue in evidence. We look at net migration, so in other words, once you have kids in your district and then they advance year to year from one grade to the next. You know, we know, in reality, families are moving out and moving into your district, but just on net, what does that look like in terms of what those cohorts of kids do once they're with you? We are going to talk about the universal transitional kindergarten. That actually is probably the single biggest factor in terms of how your enrollment is going to change in the future. And then just to keep an eye always on residential development that can, if things are different from what they have been historically, can kind of change what we see with that net migration a little bit. When we know for sure, if more things get built, more families will move in. That said, let's go ahead and get into some more specifics. So on the next slide, here are those details of your historical enrollment. So at the top, you just have that total enrollment. And again, I gave you that range of a little over 300 students that you stayed within, and that's even really exaggerated a little bit. In 2021, you had kind of an anomalous year where you had your lowest enrollment in recent history. And if not for that, you would have an even tighter range. And then you look at that bottom chart, and what that's really showing you is, because sometimes the total enrollment can be a little bit misleading. You might have had a bubble come in that raised your enrollment in elementary school, then that hits middle school and high school, you kind of see it working through, but then smaller cohorts come in after that, and you have more of a wave pattern in this chart. Again, yours is very steady, about, you know, a little over 3,000 high school students, around 21 to 2,200 middle school students, around 4,000 elementary school students. That is what Castro Valley's enrollment apparently is just going to do, year in and year out. Again, barring 2021, when we just saw a little bit of a downtick, and even interestingly there, it wasn't all concentrated at elementary school. It was kind of spread out, and then it recovered in the current year, particularly with elementary school jumping back up, you know, to its historical happy spot, you know, a little bit above 4,000 students. So let's go ahead and go to our next slide. And what we will see on our following one. I think we skipped over one maybe? Yes, there we go. Looking at, so again, I mentioned that that incoming kindergarten cohort, that's really the most important one, because that really sets the tone. If you know you're going to have bigger or smaller kindergarten cohorts coming in, that's what really automatically knocks up or knocks down that total enrollment the next year compared to the cohort that, whose place this one is taking, basically. And again, what you see with that dark blue is your kindergarten, while the lighter blue is the transitional kindergarten. We'll talk a little bit more about how that's set to change in a few slides. But really what you've seen again is a lot of stability. 2019, you had a bigger-than-typical year. The current year, you also have a little bit bigger-than-typical year. So you have kind of maybe a little bit of a mini bubble that's coming in, that's kind of in some of your early elementary grades right now. But again, for the most part, and again, just to have you perhaps appreciate where we're coming from with this, is that many, many districts again are just seeing more of a stair step going down when we look at this information for them. And for you, you have remarkably stable, you know, steady and stable numbers of how those cohorts are sized coming in year after year. And that's exactly what led to that, you know, just very flat-looking chart on the previous slide. So let's go ahead and go to our next slide. And this is, one thing that we also want to look at is, are there any trends going on with your local private schools that might be contributing to the trends we've been seeing with your enrollment? And you probably aren't surprised at this point if I say what we're seeing here are very steady numbers. You have two main private schools, one that's K5 and one that's K8, and a couple of smaller ones that are located, you know, where the school is physically located within your school district boundary. But you see, I mean, there are about, you know, a little over 400 more elementary school students and about 75 middle school students that are enrolled. We don't know if they live in your district, but they're at least enrolled in schools that are located in your district. But again, but it's been a very stable pattern, yes.
We do have a question in the room?
Sure.
Hi, Rob. I was just hoping we can go back to the transitional kindergarten, and I was just wondering, as I was reading this, if the state hadn't said transitional kindergarten, universal, would your prognosis still be the same for our district? I mean, I know we already intentionally have been ramping up the program, but is this replacing students who wouldn't have been there otherwise when you look at overall declining enrollment in the state?
Yeah, no, that is a great question. So for most districts, what you really see with the way transitional kindergarten is expanding is that you're not picking up brand-new kids that you wouldn't be enrolling otherwise, for the most part. There are some exceptions when you get into the weeds in terms of maybe you get some kids that come to you for TK, have a great experience, and they might have gone to private school otherwise, but they loved it so much in TK that they stick around with you instead. But really, for the most part, you're talking about kids that you would have gotten for kindergarten the next year anyway. It's just how many more kids you're getting that extra year early. And yes, I'm kind of spoiling the ending a little bit, but when we get to the projection, really what you see is that the growth that you have is largely at the elementary schools that's going to be coming up ahead, and the, far and away, the bulk of that is additional TK students. So again, it's not that you're enrolling students that you wouldn't have enrolled, it's just that you have more and more of them as four-year-olds a year before you're used to having them.
Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome. And so, yeah, I think we've, but again, private schools, very stable, so we can go ahead and move on to our next slide. And this one's interesting, because here, if you have, if you just say looked at, because you can go onto the census.gov website, if you just pull up total population, one of the geographic areas you can select are school districts. And if you just looked at the total population in Castro Valley, you'd say, oh, well, look, we're adding people, we're adding residents, we're growing. But if you, and this spring, a little, just a few months, they're going to have, from the 2020 census, the detailed age breakdown. So I'm excited about that, just on a professional level, but even just looking at what's available now, splitting it out under 18 and over 18, what you see is that your school-age population essentially, I mean, we don't know how many of these are under fives, but I suspect it's probably pretty stable, based on everything else we're seeing, has been almost exactly the same for 20 years, even as, especially in the last 10 years, you've really seen some overall growth. You have this very, very steady, what you would call school-age population, and that's exactly been reflected in your enrollment numbers. We like it when these, when we look at, you know, data from your enrollments and then just general population data from the census, and they're telling the same story, and in this case, they are. But if you have noticed overall population growth, that is all occurring predominantly above, you know, in the adult population, while your under-18 population is really holding very steady. But again, a lot of, there are districts where you have that total population is increasing at the same time as the under-18 population is actually going down. So again, you at least are just holding very steady on that. So next slide, please. Okay, so that was a kind of a look back at where you have been. We do want to go ahead and take a look now at, before we get into the projections, of just a little bit about where you are now with the students that you have enrolled this year. I'm just going to take a moment to linger on this slide, because this is one that you can mine a lot of really useful information out of. And so this, we only have this for your elementary schools, because you only have the one comprehensive high school, and you don't have boundaries for your two middle schools. So in terms of looking at where you have boundaries at your elementary schools, if you look down each column, that is where those students live. So that first column, you know, Castro Valley, if you look at the total down there, there are 549 elementary students who are enrolled in your district who live in that boundary. That bold number at the top, if you go across, you know, just looking at each number down that column, and that's 395 who both live in the boundary and go there, but then every other number are kids who are living in the Castro Valley boundary but are enrolled in a different school. 13 at Chabot, 38 at Independent, 6 at Jensen Ranch, et cetera, all the way down. You can also look at it going across, so of the, you know, total attending, 472 at Castro Valley. Again, 395 are coming from within the boundary, but 11 are coming to Castro Valley who live in Chabot, two live in Jensen Ranch, 23 live in Proctor. And all of this together, you can look up individual numbers, but you also have just some more trends at the bottom. End migration is what percentage of a school's enrollment are kids coming in from outside the boundary? You know, obviously Palomares is your big outlier there. You only have 24 kids who live in that boundary, but with 121 attending there, yes, 85% of the kids who are at that school come in from outside of it. But otherwise, that school aside, you tend to see something in the 20s or 30s. Fewer, a little bit lower than that. Out migration is the opposite of just all the kids who live in the boundary, how many of them are going somewhere else to go to school? And I should note also, the in-migration does include that last column of students who live in some other district and are coming in. We'll delve into that a little bit more. You see, there are 367 here at elementary school, there are a little over 200 at the middle schools, and a little over 300 at the high schools, just so that you know, since you won't see those numbers broken out by school and grade in this presentation. So that's factored into the in-migration, but your net migration at the bottom, we leave the inter-districts, the non-resident students out of it. So if you total up that, you know, negative 99, negative 101, 102 in that row that's highlighted in gold, that's going to be a zero sum. And what this really tells you is just between your elementary school boundaries, where do you have just on net more kids leaving than coming in or vice versa? So this just gives you some useful information to understand your current dynamics of not just what the enrollment level is, but kind of where it is and what patterns you have of kind of student and family choice in some of your school enrollment. So we can go ahead and go to the next slide.
Go forward. Do you have a couple of questions here?
Of course, yes. No, this one tends to generate a lot of questions.
Howdy, Rob. I was wondering if we can go over the migration number, because I found this fascinating. It seems, do we have any way of breaking out the data where it's a choice, if you will, to go from one school to another? Or, sorry, we don't have room at this school, so we need to put you at this other school? Because to me, that's a very different thing, and I think that informs the Board thinking about boundaries for the different schools.
Yeah, no, that is a great question, and you're right in that sometimes you see the what, and you don't always get the why from looking at this. And I would have to refer to your district staff if that is, if they can tag a student ID with, you know, either attending homeschool or on an intra-district transfer with a reasoning, I could absolutely pull that out, but I would just need the information. And I don't, I would have to check with the district if that's information that they have.
Yeah, and then my second question is with other districts, right? So those are inter-district transfers. And let me just say, inter-district transfer students are our students. We support them as our students. And I just, I feel like sometimes in this town, there's, I have some problems with how people talk about that population. But what I'm trying to say is, I think it would be useful to see that breakout for the high schools, Redwood, Castro Valley High School, and also Creekside and Canyon as well. Because when I think about kind of equity issues and demographics, understanding the mix of students, that could be helpful. I just, I don't know if that's something that you're able to provide for us.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, I guess on that point, I absolutely know what schools, all of your inter-districts, and I, sometimes I say non-resident, because some of them don't always show up as official inter-district transfers due to maybe a parent working in the district, or there might be other reasons why they didn't go through a full inter-district. But, but short answer, yes, I actually did send Ms. Chan that full listing, so she can hopefully share that with you tonight.
And then I'll just, Michael, we were going to do a lot of that in the workshop to talk about that stuff. So if there's questions about the data, like specifically, that's okay. Just want to put that out. Sarah?
Question about the data. Also, looking at this chart, is it possible to get drilled down further when looking at the other district column to see where kids are coming in from? And I'm specifically, you know, the Palomares in particular has a disproportionately large number of kids coming in from out of district, for instance. I'm just curious to know more about that.
It's coming in the presentation.
Yep, yep. A couple of slides, I'll have some more information on that. And now if we wanted to specifically find where those 71 students coming into Palomares are coming from, that I don't have broken out explicitly just by that level, but I could get that for you. Just probably not during our presentation.
Thank you. That's okay.
You can continue, Rob.
Okay, great. So, yeah, I think I just wanted to make sure that, I think this is a very useful piece, as long as you understand what it is and what it's showing and how it works. I just wanted to spend a minute going over that, but let's go ahead and go to our next slide. And this is now just a map, so we have taken your student list, and based on the student addresses that we have, we have just placed, you know, in my GIS analysis, a dot on the map for all those students, and that's how I was able to do everything that went into that last chart. But here's where you can kind of see that. And again, we're really constant, I mean, you do have a few students who live in the parts of your district that are to the north and south here of the main area where your school facilities are located. You see the inset there that shows that. And yes, you do also see, not just in this, but especially in the inset, that you do have, obviously, quite a few students who live outside of your district. And so we do want to go ahead and show a little bit more on that, which is on the next slide. And so we have this broken out by the city of residents, and that is as supplied in that student's address. And so you see Hayward, and then there is a part of Castro Valley that is served by the Hayward School District. And so by city, you see Hayward, Castro Valley, San Leandro, really the bulk of it, some more in San Lorenzo and Oakland. And then you have, you know, San Ramon and Dublin with at least more than four or five. And then, I mean, I didn't even list, it would have taken up multiple, you know, a couple of pages to have all the ones that just have really a handful. And then when you break it out by district, again, you see it's really Hayward USD is about, you know, more than half of the total with San Lorenzo and San Leandro USDs being far and away the other ones that really have a lot. And then otherwise, it's, you know, Oakland's the only other one with double digits on its own, and then everything else is a smaller number. But this at least tells you where those students are coming from, if, you know, again, specific correlations, and I'm happy to provide some of those answers, like of the, you know, of the enters at this school, where are they coming from? It just takes me just a little bit to, you know, run through my software and just pull that exact information out. So I think we can go ahead and move to the next slide.
Rob, before, we do have a question in the room?
Thank you. Hopefully, very quick, just backing up to the reference to the part of Castro Valley that's served by Hayward Schools. The blue dots obviously represent those kids who are transferring into Castro Valleys Unified. Is there data that you have considered in preparing your analysis regarding the number of students who live in that area who are not, who are not able to come into Castro Valley Schools?
Yes, that's coming.
Yeah, or, yeah, I mean, we, in terms of the students who live in the part of Castro Valley that is not in your school district and who are also not enrolled with you, I don't have the details on those, you know, if they're enrolled with another school district, I don't necessarily have access to detailed information on those students, but I do know about the ones who are enrolled with you.
And there is a slide that shows, like the previous slide. So the top number, those are students who actually live in Hayward but belong to us. There is actually that number that you were asking, I think it's in a couple of slides.
Yep, and so then a quick look, now looking ahead though, at your projected enrollment. And so again, we mentioned the big engine that tends to drive change in a school district's enrollment is what's happening with that new incoming kindergarten cohort every year. And how does that compare to the cohort that it might be replacing, either at elementary schools or across the district? And the most predictable and reliable indicator for us to know what those incoming kindergarten cohorts are going to look like in future years is what's been happening with your local births. And at this point, you really can't be surprised if I tell you, you are showing a lot of stability. And statewide, countywide, and I have those figures in the full report, just so you can see them. Those, again, that's that descending staircase I was talking about. In your district, you actually, you know, set, you know, in 2016, had one of your relative, you know, higher years of births, but overall, you've really stayed pretty steady. And you actually have had births that have gone up each of the last three years. As far, you know, most districts I work for, I can't even tell you what they would do for that Klondike bar of births that go up from one year to the next, even one or two times. And you are really staying in a pretty steady range, and that's exactly what leads to that very steady kindergarten that we've seen. Now, I did mention, you've had a couple of larger kindergarten cohorts in recent years. And if with births going up even just a little bit, that's what I mentioned, there's kind of a bubble that you might see in the next few years, even independent of TK, with there just being a few more kids that you get in Kendra and having just kind of a very small mini bubble that starts moving up through elementary school that will longer-term hit middle school and high school. But this is that box that's outlined in red. These are, for the most part, the kids that you have been born, but that you haven't seen yet as your students who enroll with CV USD. And just the fact that you aren't seeing that going down, and are even seeing it going up a little bit, really puts you in a very special place in the state of California right now.
Rob, there's a question in the room about, you want to go ahead and ask it?
Yeah. I like your humor, Rob. I was wondering, so clear, you mentioned that Castro Valley is basically built out. I think people who live here appreciate what that means. How do you factor in, like, oh, Castro Valley's housing market's really hot compared to other communities, and understanding in-migration of maybe it's a more demand by families? So how, so, so that creates is one indicator, but how do you account for that? And I appreciate that housing supply is probably limited, so there's like an upper limit, but is that a factor at all when you think about that?
No, great question, and I think that it's a little bit more of cause and effect and symptom and result. It's more that that's probably why you're seeing these births like this, is exactly that it's desirable and it's accessible for a lot of these young families even to get into before they have their kids. And that's why you're seeing these births being as steady as they are. We'll see, we'll show, I'm actually going to get into the next slide, what we look at with kind of that overall, sorry, not quite, the slide after this, I was going to talk a little bit about TK. So we'll hold off on that for a second, but the other part of your question of also kind of that net migration and our families that already have young kids moving into Castro Valley, I think that does occur, and we see that with your numbers of how your cohorts change. And part of it is proof by the absence of other things, and that really is, I feel like I keep harping on it, but it's just so important for you to really get that, you know, a lot of other districts, they're seeing those young families moving away from their district. And they see that you start off with 100 kindergartners, and by the time they're out of elementary school, that cohort of 100 is only eight, has only 80 left, because more and more people are leaving. And you, just the fact that you aren't seeing that, that you're actually seeing on net more people moving in than out And you, just the fact that you aren't seeing that, that you're actually seeing on net more people moving in than out in terms of your enrollments, that I think really speaks to that. So that, yes, and and you're right, it's not being driven. I mean, there's a handful of still of infill and pockets of modest numbers of new homes getting built in your district. But what's really driving this is young families continuing to move in. And so, yeah, so let's go ahead and go to the next slide. And just very quickly, I think you know the high points of this. I just wanted a quick reminder of what's happening with transitional kindergarten. Uh, just the quick wayback history is uh back in twenty twelve uh when the state moved the enrollment date back from December first to September first, and then did that over an increment of three months. Uh, those three months, when students used to be eligible for Kinder but weren't anymore, that was really the foundation of TK. So those kids could still enroll as four-year-olds in a transitional kindergarten program. And now, the mandate is that by twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, every student, uh even if they uh don't, you know, are uh, you know, you know, not, you know, four years old through the whole year, they don't have that birthday until August. The very, very youngest uh still get to come in at four years old and be in TK. And so that, uh, you know, there's all kinds of other things to talk about, and you will hear about that uh with the facilities needs that come along with that, what that does to your balance across uh your elementary schools particularly, but this is really the nuts and bolts of what's happening. And so let's go ahead and go to the next slide. Uh, and so now we talk about, uh, again, so we know what the births have looked like. And then we compare that with the kindergartners with a little bit of a lag and look and see uh if that is a steady ratio. And you see uh since twenty sixteen particularly, uh you have been between a, you know, one point one one and a one point one four in terms of, and that's exactly it to your, to the point that was just brought up. Uh, you actually do have more kindergartners who show up and enroll with you compared to kids that were born in your district. So again, yes, there are these younger families moving into that. Uh, you know, and bringing those young kids that are, you know, one, two, three years old, not quite in school yet with them. And then more of those kids come to you for Kinder. Again, I mentioned also, you had that anomaly in twenty twenty-one. Uh, you just, you know, just dive back down, and this year, right back to a remarkably steady and consistent number. This gives us a lot of confidence looking at those births, that we also know what your kindergarten out through about twenty twenty-seven is probably going to look like. Your TK at the bottom is a little bit different. Uh, yeah, you saw there, you had a a blip more like in twenty twenty. Uh, but otherwise, you you've been getting around twenty to twenty-two percent of your births four years later showing up as TK students. You did see the beginning of an increase there this year with the rollout, and we expect that to continue and to maybe accelerate a little bit. Uh, but again, overall, we, what what this really allows is that if we know the births, and we do, because the California Department of Health is great at publishing that pretty consistently and pretty quickly. Uh, so we almost know everything from twenty twenty-two and what's in the books. Uh, you know, we have a pretty good idea, uh but that gives us uh, again, we we know that you're, you aren't primed to have big, big changes based on who's being born. And then let's go to one more slide, which is now you know those incoming cohorts, but what else is happening? Uh, if we look at all of your K elevens in one year, and then you get summer break, and then the next year, all those kids come back as first graders through twelfth graders. If you were living in uh just on an island where nobody could easily move out or move in, you would expect that to be a zero every year. Uh, just all the kids that you saw last year, you get them back again this year. Again, in reality, people are moving out and moving in. Uh, but on net, uh, you gain more kids than you you lose. Even in your most anomalous year in the, you know, from twenty twenty going into twenty twenty-one, you still had, I mean, only point one percent, but you still gained more than you lost on net. Now, you do see this had been trending down, and then it kind of jumped back up this year. I suspect really what I tend to see when you have that anomalous down year and then a big anomalous recovery year is you kind of average that out, you say those, it really, those are both about one point two. Again, you're looking at a lot of stability. And this continues to just feed into that point that uh you really are a very much a known quantity. Once you have your enrollment, it's pretty consistent what is happening. If you break this down a little bit more by grade, uh, not all by any means, but a lot of this is that at the grade six and seven and nine, you tend to pick up more students that, again, you saw those private schools, you know, very few of them are high schools, so that makes sense. The the ninth grade bump, a lot of that are your private school students coming back to you for public school and high school, or the K-five private school coming to you at middle school. But even at the elementary grades, you are picking up on net, you know, one to one and a half percent growth most years. So now that tells us uh your incoming cohorts and how those cohorts change over time. So we can go to the next slide. And the big picture of that, so just the big table full of numbers, I'm not certainly not going to read it all for you, but just to give you the highlights. And so the main part is that very top row across the TK. I mean, you see how it's gone up this year, and then how it's projected to keep going up. And even past rollout, I do think that you're going to, just because you have a little bit of a gap between all the Kinders that you get by the next year and the TKs we're projecting, and that's where I think it's important to really track over the next couple of years, how many TKs you get. Because even by, you know, out to twenty thirty, I'm still showing kind of a, you know, there's a couple hundred kids that we're pretty confident you're going to get for kindergarten based on all these very rock solid trends that you have. And we're not yet, based on this first year of the rollout, seeing them in that proportion coming to you for TK. And it's, you know, but again, we're still in the first official year of the rollout. So that's just one to keep an eye on, based on what we're seeing this year. Uh, this is how we're projecting that, but just keep it, yeah, I don't think it goes much higher. You're not gonna get kids to, you know, that you wouldn't have had for kindergarten anyway, coming to you for TK. But you do see that there is a little bit of a gap there, that if that fills in, that TK projection could be even higher. That said, with the TK we're seeing, you look at those subtotals across the bottom, TK five, AKA elementary school, six through eight, AKA middle school, and nine through twelve, AKA high school. Uh, it's really the elementary school where you're seeing uh some growth of almost four hundred students that we're projecting. And if you look at TK, about three hundred of that is just from new TK students. That's, you know, I guess what I meant, there was kind of, you were gonna have kind of a mini bubble anyway. Because you've seen a couple of big Kinders recently, we know the births are going ever so slightly up. And so there's about a hundred and then about three hundred more just from new TK. At the same time, uh, again, not that it was just totally flat, you've had some very slight fluctuations. We do see there are some slightly smaller cohorts that are gonna be coming into middle school and high school. You're just going to just a little bit go down at those levels, and then overall, that enrollment is going up. And again, most of that's driven by elementary, most of which in turn is driven by TK. And then I think I just have one final slide, and then maybe we can go ask any other questions. And it really is for next steps, and I think you'll be doing more on this tonight. It's really talking about, it's the TK that's really driving your change. That's the big change you're seeing, so just really identifying by the time you have all of them in the few years, or at least more of them uh without as much rapid growth after that uh what the plan is for that. And then again, do monitor, I mean, I don't think it's likely. I've talked to your county planners at Alameda County, they don't think it's likely that anything would change in terms of planning and zoning that would allow for bigger development. But if anything does, just know that that could lead to even more growth. So just if you hear about something in that arena, which I meant, I don't think that's likely, but if you do, that should set off a alarm to immediately reassess everything with your projections. And then just do, you know, update the study as regularly as you feel like you can just to, again, make sure that all these trends that I just went over are still holding steady. If anything starts to change, you have kind of a bellwether, if the births start to drop off, if you suddenly see your grade-to-grade migration trend negative, that's your, you know, could be kind of a canary in the coal mine of this very solid history starting to change. And if, you know, if that's the case, then you want to really watch it more closely. But for now, it's just watch those trends, watch those indicators. As of right now, they are looking like they're going to carry on with business as usual, which just within your district again, is remarkably uh kind of anticlimactic and boring. But for you as an outlier within the state, in particular, your area of the state is actually really exciting. So I think that's everything I had planned to present, and I'm happy to still answer questions if anyone has them.
Mike?
So this was really fun, and I just wanna compliment you for the dot map. I just love that map. Um, I was curious about, um, you know, back in the eighties, California saw like a collapse in enrollment, right? And um a lot of districts throughout the state had to manage that. How anticipated is was that? And like, when we look at the broader and um declining enrollment throughout the state of California, do we have a sense of what that might look like in ten or twenty years? Do we, do we see it as being a long-term trend? Do we see it as a short-term response to other variables? I'm I'm just wondering how deep people are imagining that will be.
Yep, and that's interesting. Uh, I I can't speak as much to the eighties one. I I was one of those elementary types myself, uh, when a lot of that was going on. And uh is depressingly hard to find really good data, even for things that are just, you know, thirty, you know, even twenty years old, much less thirty, forty. Uh, so I haven't spent a lot of time really going back and re-litigating uh some of those previous trends. Aside from that, yeah, I mean, you you see it coming, I mean, you know, again, that that tie of enrollments to births tends to be very steady, economic factors. Again, we saw the the Great Recession around uh oh eight, oh nine, twenty ten was really when uh you saw a lot of districts that had been growing turn the corner. Uh, obviously, if you've been having growth, that's been driven by residential development and market conditions change. I know there are some districts in the valley keeping an eye on that right now because they've been having the housing construction coming online in massive numbers, and that's, a lot of developers are pumping the brakes now. Uh, but as far as statewide trends, uh, it's really, I I look forward to the year when California has more births than it had the previous year, because it has not happened now for some, you know, what, fifteen, sixteen straight years? It's been, it's been a while, and that's really just going to be the first sign of, yeah, as far as how much further can we go down before we kind of hit the bottom and start bouncing up again? Is a great question, and I I still tend to lean on you. Just by the nature of how we do this, you you kind of have at least a few-year head start when you see trends in births, obviously some economic trends, uh. I think it's overstated a little bit with the news articles of, you know, U-Haul shortages in California, everyone's leaving. Uh, you know, no one wants to be here anymore. The the fact of how much housing there is being built and how much pressing need you're getting from the governor right now on just housing trends in general indicates there are still a lot of people here, a lot of people moving here. Uh, it's just really, like you saw in your chart, it's more, the people moving here are sometimes uh older adults and not having full families or kids with them. And that's really, uh, again, something else to see when we start seeing uh the census numbers showing that under eighteen population, whether it's from births or just, again, more in-migration, the family's happening. I know that that that's not really a definitive answer for you, but it's basically, there's a lot of things we can look at. And we know statewide, we haven't really seen anything turning the corner yet.
Thank you, Rob. We're gonna have one more question in the room, and then we're gonna move on to our next.
Uh, I just wanted to ask, how is uh immigration affecting the state of California? And does it in any way affect Castro Valley?
No, no, I mean, obviously, immigration is, there there remains uh immigration into California, and for a lot of communities, uh, that is one of the only positive factors in enrollment growth that's helping offset, you know, what are otherwise already some patterns and decrease. You know, I I have not looked at Castro Valley too specifically into immigration. That is, again, something I'm not sure, uh, you know, again, aside from that you uh, you know, you have more kindergartners than you get relative to how many births that you had. Uh, but we, I, you know, I believe a lot of that is more related to uh people moving in from other parts of California and the Bay Area, probably more than immigration from outside of the country. But that said, it it's certainly something that we can try to find. Uh, I, ooh, I'm sorry, just had a notion. Uh, I can kind of add, I can supplement a little bit. Uh, one of the best places to get that kind of data is actually from the IRS, at least for uh, you know, kind of legal taxpaying uh people. But you tend, they track from year to year, people whose location of filing has changed. It's not kept, you know, we don't have it for the current year, but we can certainly see trends on if there are more people who are moving in from out of state or out of the country who are filing their returns. Uh, now, it's only at the county level, but we could at least look. Uh, so again, it wouldn't be Castro Valley specific, given how much of an outlier you are even in in Alameda County, but it would tell us at least something about uh how many people who are uh immigrants who uh might be moving in. So that that's, I think that's the best thing I can offer for something that I know I can look at, while I can also look perhaps for something that is a little bit more local and specific to you.
We we won't, we won't need to do that.
All right, of course, I I I I aim to please.
Thank you, Rob, but we really appreciate you presenting tonight. And I'm gonna hand it back over to Suzie to um bring us to the Facilities Opportunity Study.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Okay, um, so I'm actually going to have our Director of Facilities, Sharon True Quinns, come up and introduce our next presenters. Um, uh, Sharon has done a lot of work on this, uh, working with the um with the uh the presenters that we have tonight. And so um I'm gonna turn it over to her.
Before, before, actually, we have um, Ms. Sharon True Quinns, take us through the next one. Again, we're gonna watch the presentation, listen to the presentation there here, ask just questions that relate to this, and then we'll definitely, after this, go back down and do that. But I do wanna start us off by saying, this presentation, I mean, I know Sharon's gonna go over this a little bit as well. We have our bond for the hundred twenty-three million dollars that our amazing community approved has really resulted in just amazing work that we've been able to do to modernize, to actually, really, a lot of times at the board, we talk about, it's really maintenance that wasn't able to be done that catches up. And this, when we talk about what we talk about today, isn't, oh, we did that, now we're gonna do something different. It's like, what else are we going to do? So keeping all the good work that's been done, but what's next? So with that going.
So, um, yeah, so this opportunity study, it's part of a larger effort of what we're trying to do with updating our facilities master plan. And that is something that is generally done every five years. We are um a a little over five years with COVID. We're gonna lump COVID altogether into one year. Um, so that, uh, but what we've been doing since we've been uh able to update and uh all of our facilities, we're at a good point to look at opportunity. That's why I named it kind of uh the facilities opportunities, to look at the potential going forward of what we can do with our school campuses. And as, you know, it's more like a living document where it will, you know, change and more as we get more input. And these are just some ideas, where we just kind of have fun with it to say, okay, you know, what can we do? And so, you know, I'm gonna start just a little bit. Um, you know, with the bond, we're able to, yeah, take care of a lot of deferred maintenance. And as we come towards the end of the bond, I'm also being very strategic about like improvements we've done. And as we've been talking about the improvement studies of making sure that we keep the investment that we've done with this bond, but tying it with potentially, if we do get more funds, what else can we do? Um, to to make sure we're kind of getting the most bang for our bucks. So um first couple of slide just talks about all the things we've been able to do with, um, starting from twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen, just, you know, things we've been able to do in the bond. And then I'm gonna hand it over to Kristin Rose from uh Foresight to help us with kind of next steps, or, well, you know, what can be next and big ideas. And then after that, it'll be uh Roger Clark, that'll talk about like the specific school uh plans that we've drawn up.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Armani and trustees of the board. Uh, my name is Kristin Rose, I am the CEO and founder of Foresight Planning and Development. Um, we've been working very closely with your facility staff. We also work really closely with Rob and King Consulting, and so um, we're working with them on several other projects as well, so our team is very cohesive at this point. Um, so I wanna start off with um presenting kind of the concept around um opportunity study. And really, the goal when we're looking at facilities is aligning your facilities to support your educational outcomes. And so what that means is making sure that we understand your goals, your standards, your requirements for those outcomes, and then identifying what are the instructional delivery methodologies that you're using, and then how do those environment spaces adjacencies support? that you're using, and then how do those environment spaces adjacencies support all of that? Uh, and then how does that translate into design? So that's the framework that we're using here. So keeping that in mind, you have identified your strategic directions that outline your desired outcomes. So we want to make sure that that's the foundation that we're starting with here. It's all about what is that educational experience for students? Um, and so what this opportunity study does is look at six kind of big ideas, right? So you've already created a foundation for your facilities in terms of the work that you've done with your previous bond measure. It's a lot of infrastructure. It's a lot of those must do items. Now we're building on that, and we're saying, what can we do next to further enhance your ability for your facilities to support your educational outcomes? So there's six big ideas, and I'll go through them in detail. The first one is flexible adaptable classrooms. We've seen that in some of your campuses. And there's an opportunity here for us to extend that across campuses, but what does that look like? In detail, so that might be things like ample storage for materials, making sure your spaces um add interest without distraction. It's flexible furniture, it's integrated technology, but it's also being cognizant of those maintenance items, things that are easy to maintain and operationally sound. It's looking at outdoor environments. How can you enhance those outdoor learning spaces to be an extension of the classroom space, right? It's more than in between space. It's more than fields. Can we maximize those outdoor spaces? Um, can you start to integrate and make sure they feel like a space with the the design, the um paint, the exterior facades? Looking at landscaping, how do you create space with landscaping? How do you create um different areas for learning? And then integrating some of those outdoor furnishings like seating, maybe that additional shade, things like that to really create more uh enhanced environments. It's refreshed front doors. Um, and so one of those things is creating a a sense of presence within your neighborhoods, right? And also gives you an opportunity to ensure that you have secure campuses. So it's things like prominent signage and wayfinding. It's glazing to improve sightlines and visibility, but also add some architectural interest to the buildings. Um, maybe exterior seating for visitors and waiting spaces, uh fence lines to create secure single points of entrance uh entry. Um, so it's really taking an opportunity to create a great um sense of presence, but also secure campuses. Libraries, innovations, and multi-use spaces. And there's a few different slides based on this, but it's really looking at those spaces and saying, how can we enhance them um to create more variety um to support learning for today, right? Um, and also to make sure that your spaces are connected uh and fully support a well-rounded education. So it's things like, um, you know, efficient circulation desk and work areas, interior graphics and place making, um appropriately scaled shel- shelving and display surfaces. It's different areas for different activities. So there might be a mix of soft seating, task seating, reading nooks and areas, right? So you've got libraries and what we're trying to do here, say, look, what's the potential of this space? How might we enhance it to create even more uses in this space? Looking at innovation areas, right? How do you support kind of open-ended, maybe STEM-based learning? Um, and what does that look like? So it might be things like um flexible walls to be able to change and adapt the size of the space to uh allow for different group sizes. Um, it's looking at equipment with work surfaces and storage, making sure that that's available for students. It's flexible movable furnishings to support a variety of different activities. Um, it's making sure, again, it's it's looking at resilient flooring for ease of maintenance and and things like, you know, messy projects and science and really for kids to get their hands dirty. And then also place making, right? Those interior graphics. Um, and those are small ways to create a sense of space, a sense of community uh within your spaces. Um, and then looking at multi-use spaces, how can we start to look at, say, an NPR that serves as both maybe a gymnasium and a performance area? How do we enhance those spaces? Are there opportunities to create connections to the outdoors and maybe extend that space even further? Um, but it's looking at, you know, the the functionality of the space, acoustic paneling for noise control. It's looking at, you know, enhancing the architectural elements, lighting, flexible seating, and then again, opportunities to open to the outdoors. Uh, nutrition services, right? We know there's a lot of impact um with recent changes to legislation uh in terms of nutrition services. And so what does that mean for you? It means the need for increased capacity, but also increased efficiency. Um, and there's another opportunity here to create a sense of space for students, a sense of community, especially at your middle school and high school level. Um, and so that might be a variety of different seating areas, maybe pods, uh maybe high top seating, maybe low top, uh, maybe even bringing in opportunities for collaboration areas and integrated technologies that doubles as a learning space as well. Soft seating, small group areas. So it's much more than a a basic cafeteria space. You serve food and you sit down and eat, right? Can you make that space even more multifunctional for some of your other uses? Wellness and student support, right? So making sure that you have all those wraparound services. And what we see is that districts are really extending their capabilities and the services that they provide to students. Uh, and a lot of times what you have are just existing classrooms. And people get stuck in those existing classes, you know, RSP is in a a classroom, speech is in classroom, right? Because that's the square footage you have. Can you start to co-locate those spaces? And think about wellness holistically and providing those services in an integrated space. So that might be open areas or flex spaces for things like OT or APE. It might be enclosed private space for counseling or one-on-one sessions, but maybe it's also small group spaces for small group meetings. Um, but it's also cognizant of the requirements for lots of storage and accessibility and things like that. Okay, and so I'm gonna bring my partner Roger Clark up from Runal Clark Architects, and he's gonna go through some of the specific sites and how some of these big ideas have been translated or have the potential to be translated on some of your sites.
Thank you, Kristen. Uh, I'm Superintendent, members of the Board of Trustees, uh, happy to be here tonight. We're gonna go through five sites tonight. We looked at all of your sites, and so you have a report, I believe, that's been conveyed to you that addresses all of those. But what we tried to look at is all of those big ideas and how they would work at your sites. These are just visions of what it might be. It's not necessarily the final plan of anything. And so the idea is here tonight is to get your input uh and to find out what's important to you. So we're gonna talk a little bit about what we saw out at the sites. Uh, this is Castro Valley Elementary School, and so we looked at it, we walked it. Um, the administration is small. You come onto the site. There's not a clear way that you get to the front door of this campus. There's a lot of portables, and there's really not a lot of playfield or area for students to play in. And so we just started looking at that and looked at opportunities, and again, not design. So the idea here is, this is how do we evoke kind of the responses from you? And so we started looking at that administration of how do we create a new front door to this campus? How do we get people in the community excited when they come to this campus and how do we engage with them better? How do we bring students and parents into a library facility? And so we envisioned a new building in this case, the possibility of doing that, relocating the multipurpose room at this campus and making something new and exciting. One of the things that we try to look at, especially after COVID, and some of the things that we learned is indoor-outdoor relationships and being able to open up walls, and you'll see some pictures here in a moment. You saw some earlier of spaces where we can open up either with sliding walls or uh, excuse me, overhead doors and those types of things where we can create those indoor-outdoor relationships. The kindergarten and TK, and so uh Rob talked about that, about the impact from that. And looking at classrooms, having adequate numbers of classrooms that are the proper size for that with restrooms and all of the things that those little ones need, having adjacent playgrounds and that they don't have right now. Creating a science facility as a part of this. And then looking at maybe recapturing some some playfield area at this site. And so those are some of the big ideas that we identified at that site. And then also one other little thing was kind of creating some landscape screening from that adjacent apartment building there where you have some people looking down uh at the kids. So these are some of the ideas, you know, we talked about, you know, down at the left uh side is a project where we had the bear den and the multipurpose room opens up to the outside where you can have overflow for parents or you can have other activities that spill out from that kind of a facility. A kindergarten play area where you have bright colors and engaging play environments for them with a variety of play structures. Two-story classrooms in some cases that you can do economically uh with uh again, opening on to playground areas in a confined area and a controlled area, library media spaces uh that are colorful and bright and engaging. Stanton Elementary School is the next site. So we started looking at this and it, as you, and I'm preaching to the choir, you you guys know this facility much better than I do probably, but the administration is in the back. It has, you know, some issues with even finding the front door to this campus. You have the multipurpose room. Uh, and then you have a large number of portables and you don't have too many kindergartens that are the proper size. So we started looking at this of what could we do? What could we do to this site? And this is pretty dramatic. Uh, the idea of kind of flipping this site to the front door of the campus being off of Stanton, um, bringing in a new administration wellness, uh making that a part of it right at the front door of the campus. A new library facility that could open on to the front of the campus or for student access from the back side of the campus. Kindergarten and TK in an area that could be uh co-located so that they could have those kinds of outdoor playground activities. Modernizing existing classrooms and capitalizing on that so that we're not rebuilding everything. We don't have the funds or resources probably to do all of that. And so we want to keep those buildings that we assess that really makes sense to do, but capitalizing on what we have, uh fixing the multipurpose room, creating additional shade out there, which you're already in process of doing, and then removing some of those relocatables that you have out at the site. Um, and so this is, you know, some of the science and STEM of being able to create some of those other spaces, maybe where you have some flexibility, the outdoor learning environments that Kristen talked about, uh, the library and media centers where you create a more engaging environment for those students. Indian Middle School was the next one that we looked at, uh, and actually, we looked at all of them again, like I mentioned, but presenting to you tonight, and I'm gonna go to the blow up on this. Uh, this was obviously the former high school, and it has a lot of uh capacity and a lot of capabilities that you you can look at in terms of your district. But one of the things that we looked at at this site is you have kind of co-located up your maintenance and operations, and you have facilities, and they're taking over part of the campus. And so we looked at, how do we maybe separate that? So if you see on the right-hand side of this, we've kind of located and created this this area by moving those tennis courts that you see across the top. We were able to create an area for your maintenance and shops and move them out of the existing building that's a part of the campus. Uh, kept those portables there that are used for maintenance and operations now and use those for facilities. Uh, and then created an area for wellness for a science garden and enhancing the educational learning environment. We looked at an innovation center as an idea of a CTE program that could articulate into your high school. And how do we develop those kinds of things? Then we looked at, how do we capitalize on just modernizing existing buildings that still need some repair? You've done some work at the administration, but there's some additional work to do there and creating a a more, what we saw is just kind of, you you have to look around to find that entry. And so how do we enhance that and make that a more welcoming environment for your parents? The other thing we saw at this site was just spaces in between is creating those outdoor environments that, you know, especially for middle school students. And I'm gonna go, this is a project that you're already doing, but I want to go to this one of looking at those areas on the campus, uh, as these kids transition from elementary into high school about they're they're creating their own identity. And how do you find spaces with simple landscaping and some areas for seating? Uh, some students want to be out in the open and and be boisterous and social, but others want to be in quiet spaces. And so creating those variety of spaces that keep them engaged and keep your parents engaged because that's going to then capitalize on bringing more students into Castro Valley and keeping the ones that you have, like Rob talked about, creating those social spaces, the students store, the things that create identity for your campuses. Reefside Middle School is the next site. You've already done some work out here, but you have some other things going on at this campus where you have some district operations going on here. Uh, you have some portable classrooms. Beautiful architectural kind of feel for some of the classroom buildings here, though. And then you've done some work at the multipurpose room. You fixed that that building up. And so there's some nice things to build upon here. So I'm just gonna go to this one. What we looked at here was the idea of what if, what if we created a community center? An area where you could expand uh what you do at this site in terms of reaching out to the community of having something that could function both for the school and for a community asset. We pulled uh those district functions off of that corner there, created some additional parking in that area behind that. But what we did is created now a new warehouse, central kitchen facility, which will make your nutrition services that much more efficient. Uh, and this is fairly central in your district. Uh, a culinary space uh where you can either do catering, you can work with your high school, or even your middle school students in that facility, uh engineering classrooms and removing those portables that you saw here out by the field uh and creating a new facility with two-story classrooms uh that are two-story building with classrooms that then also spill out to an outdoor yard that can be, that can work in conjunction with the culinary and some of those other facilities. Looking at the playground areas, uh, what we saw is kind of, you go into that gymnasium and there's no place to enter into the facility. And so, you know, put a little bit of money into doing that, but also enhancing that outdoor area with shade and with color on those, on those hardcore areas and creating the link to the the fields that you've already uh improved uh just recently. One of the things you see on here is on the north side, we took out one classroom building. Um, that may be a little controversial, but the idea of replacing that with some newer newer classrooms, but also uh providing you some additional parking and a more uh inviting entry into the campus from that side of the the site. And so some of those ideas, and and these are just some concepts, uh, you see a multipurpose room that has that open area, but it could also have a link to, say, a community center in an adjacent building or a link to the outside. Uh, you can have the beginnings of a CTE program and hands-on learning maker spaces and those types of facilities, central spaces where maybe we do some graphics on on the ground or something that uh enhances the way these students interact, the social environment, creating that wellness. And I guess, again, Kristen talked about it is, and it's on your your strategic directions too, is creating that that whole child and addressing all of those things in the wellness of of your students. And Castro Valley High School is our last site that we looked at. And so we looked at this site, and there's a a number of things that we saw out there. Uh, librarian out there, and I think some others have done some great things with the library, but we think there's can be some things that could be done there. Um, there's not a lot of places for students here. You see that big open courtyard, and there's not a lot going on there in terms of student spaces and shade and areas for seating and those kinds of things. We saw a swimming pool that probably doesn't work too well for water polo and some of those things. There's some opportunities. There's a lot of portables in the back. Uh, and so we looked at a number of things there, and then we looked at um, the theater and music programs, and it's a strong component, but we thought it needed some enhancements. And so this is some of the thoughts and ideas that came from that of looking at a small expansion to your library and a a little bit of a reconfiguration adjacent to that along the street, creating a a two-story classroom facility. And I'll show you an idea of what that might look like in a minute, but the idea of of enhancing the front look and the street presence of the site at the corner, doing a new competition pool where you can have a true aquatic center for your community. Uh, the gymnasium, what we saw was a facility that we thought probably would be better enhanced if we replaced it and creating a a new larger gymnasium. And again, it's a matter of dollars, and if you can afford it and that kind of thing, we can certainly modernize what you have. Uh, but in this case, we thought that the impact would be tremendous if you could do something like that. One of the other things you see is areas between the buildings of enhancing those and creating courtyards and spaces, and then creating connections from those courtyards to uh classroom spaces of having that indoor-outdoor connection from those. The auto and transportation facility, there was an idea floated of, you know, maybe that's something that we need to look at. And again, this is all subject to the board and to the community of what's important to you. So these are just ideas that are out there and what can be done. A new music band and and fine arts facility. Uh, it doesn't have to necessarily be there. It could also maybe fit over by the the theater, but yeah, uh, so somewhere on this campus, we saw science labs that, you know, probably they're they're good science. We saw science labs that, you know, probably they're they're good science labs, but they could be a little bit better in terms of the technology and some of the facilities that they have. They do have a lot of space in them. One of the things we saw in the food service is just an opportunity is maybe enhance some of the the student services that go on in there and you saw some of that in the slides that Kristen presented. So that's kind of the look that we took for Castro Valley High. But these are some of the ideas and this is in this case three-court gymnasium. When you get up to, you know, twenty-eight hundred, twenty-seven hundred students or twenty-five hundred students, the number of practices between boys and girls and everything I'm sure you're familiar with is, you know, you're starting practices very early in the morning and sometimes going very late at night. And so looking at possibly a three-court gym where you can have multiple practices going on at the same time. Library facilities that have collaboration areas and open collaborative kind of working environment, two-story classroom building along the street that I talked about. And this is a automotive facility and this is actually one that we just finished construction on down south, but the idea of what that might be in terms of bringing in your community partners and making them an important piece of this and attracting those students and getting people excited to come to Castro Valley. Culinary Arts and this is a facility that we're in construction on right now. This happens to be in down south, but again, an area for competitive culinary arts education and a and a social space for students too. And so looking at all of those kinds of things, we think can be an important piece of this. But again, I want to emphasize again, these are not designs or anything. This is just ideas to get you excited about what can happen. With that, I'm happy to ask or answer any.
Yeah, any questions you have? So I was thinking about Quentin. So as he's leaving, then you can come back as a teacher and see how. Yeah.
Mike, technical question?
I I just love the vision, it really got me thinking, so thank you. I was curious when you're looking at our facilities. I I seem to remember we had a presentation a few months ago talking about the seventy-five-year bond or something for the state of California for really older facilities. And it just made me wonder, do we have facilities where we should just bulldoze them? Like I I they're at their end of their life. And one of the things when I think about environment, when I think about climate change and I think about sustainable communities, I don't want to put lipstick on a pig, like I want to make investments into facilities that are sustainable, that aren't using more energy than they need, et cetera. So how how do we think about that? And I appreciate that costs more money.
I I kind of wanted to defer that question. That sounds more of a, that's not a technical question about the presentation. I feel like that's more of a conversation and we only have some.
Understood.
Left, so.
That's fine.
Sorry.
Yeah, I have a really quick question. So at the high school, we recently, as I'm sure you know, had a lot of renovations done.
Yes.
And a lot of the facilities were closed down temporarily. If some of these things were to be put in, would it be something that could be done over the summer? Or would it be a few years of hallways being closed down?
You're going to have some impacts with the type of construction that we're talking about here. Just looking at, for example, that gymnasium, if you were to build that, it's going to have a tremendous impact. And so you even might want to, we might want to look at where could we locate that in a different place? Right now, what the idea was is identifying, is that something that's important to you? But how we do it and how we implement the phasing of that is it is a critical piece. I had a high school that I built rebuilt once, we rebuilt the whole thing, we did it in phases, took, you know, about five years. And so it's a lot of impact on a site, so I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, but it it could be done over summers, it really can't. But it can be managed so that as a student, the impact is not so noticeable for the most part.
And I will say, you know, all this costs money and we've talked about equity before and I think that's really great if we go talk about it because these are initial ideas. Any specifics that we would go through would need to be approved by the board, have a plan, all those things that are very, very detailed that we're not gonna be able to get in today because we don't have approved plans. So I would say, is it time for us to do our board workshop so we can ask some of these questions, talk about these ideas and and really think about what might we with what we have and and really dive into those burning questions we all have?
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's exciting when you see something. So thank you so much. So what we're gonna do is you have, you have name tags. Oh, that's right.
Oh, okay, so thank you for those of you who have joined us. I'm just gonna read this, if you haven't joined us from the beginning, this is a board workshop and today, we're just gonna be streaming our presentations and any public comments. Have we received any public comments? Okay. And then we're going to not stream, but we're gonna go to our board workshop out here, for those of you online, you're more than welcome to come join us here. But we are going to go discuss this information a little bit further. So we really appreciate you joining us and if you're in the area, we'd love to have you here.
We posted this information as a part of the board agenda. Awesome, thank you.